Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call to order the August 9, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Bates, would you please lead us in the pledge? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates, present. Powers, here. Lindy? Messer?
Present.
Mr. Mrowski?
Here.
President Jones?
Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your quest for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you'd like a direct response to any question you might have. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting July 19, 2021, the business meeting July 19, 2021, and the special meeting July 27, 2021.
No move.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Treasure Wagner, please introduce this evening's first presentation.
Good evening. Just have a very quick update. We've been talking about budgets a lot. Last week was focused on the whole ESSER three-year plan. And today I wanted to give you an update on the impact to our general operating budget based on what the state approved on June 28. In case you don't know me, I'm Jennifer Wagner. So just kind of background information, the area of our revenues that we're talking about is that big greens high chart the state aids, about $110 million. It's in our general fund. It comes from the state foundation formula. That's been ruled unconstitutional four times. So here are the major changes and finance, I'm hoping that Finance Committee go into a lot more detail. We're waiting for actually individual district simulations. And then the state ODE is planning to make the formulas impactful to the districts on the first October payment. So keeping in mind that once that happens, there may be some revisions that we have to do. But the two biggest changes to our funding was the direct funding of tuition. So if you remember, we used to budget $80 million in tuition that went to Ed Choice, Peterson Autism, and Community Schools. That won't, we no longer have to budget for that. We don't get the revenues for it either, but we don't have to budget for that. And so we're removing that expense line item so that lowers our budget. But then to offset that, they took the student wellness funds and took them and told us not to put them in Fund 467 anymore, separate bank accounts, so to speak, and put it back into the general fund. So that's going to increase the offsets. So this is what it looks like. So on June 28, we said our estimated budget was 676 million to general fund. We take out 80 million for tuition, we add back 12 million, 12 and a half million for student wellness. And so as of today, we're sitting at $609 million operating budget. So we hope to ask for approval in August 23rd. But so our next steps are, so as soon as I get finished, Chris is going to come up here and talk about the ESSER thought exchange feedback from the public. We're going to review that stuff tomorrow. And then on the 18th, at the committee, the whole meeting, I'm thinking I'm going to do a treasures report. We actually adopt the plan, the ESSER plan. And then we have to file by August 20 with the state. Then on August, I'm sorry, why can't say October? August 23 is your next board meeting where we will submit the final appropriations. It's not really final final, but it's not temporary. We do revisions throughout the year as things change. So and we will probably have to do something different when we get more understanding of these state formulas. And then of course, in September, we'll start planning the next budget cycle. We already had some great dialogue last week that feed into that cycle. So we're already ahead of the game. That's good news. Answer any questions?
Are there any questions for Treasure Wagner? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you for the update. Just the things I think we're, we have to change the Cal meeting to a business meeting in order to vote?
In a conversation that we discussed with legal counsel prior to this meeting, it's already scheduled as a regular business meeting. And so we do not have to change it.
So it's not really a committee of the whole?
It is a committee of the whole, but it was scheduled as a, one of the just.
Three steps there.
You need to create a center aisle there to make it a little easier.
Sorry.
Or else teach you to hide jump, one or the other.
It's scheduled at the beginning of the year as a part of the board's regular calendar. So I, we can schedule it however you'd like, but it's, you can discuss whatever topic you want at a regular meeting under the.
I do think we changed that when we adopted a different or adjusted the schedule. So if you just check that. It may have been that at the beginning, but I know a few months ago we changed to invent committees of the whole.
Yeah. I would just say we have some conventions for what we use in terms of signifying what type of meeting it's going to be for us. For the purpose of the Open Meetings Act, it's been scheduled. It nets, it's on the schedule. It's a regular part of our calendar and therefore any topic. That makes sense? Not an open meetings problem.
I got that, but we can't vote in committee of the whole is what I thought.
You're our own board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I mean, it's just a matter of changing it. It's not, as long as y'all don't do it too long. We like our committees of the whole. Can I ask another question? Just a, just a real quick, real quick. On the CUP formula and what have you. You introduced in finance and I think at least once to the whole board, the, the kind of structure or review process using CUP as the various categories. Are we going to be doing that through the year? Or will you be able to tell us how we kind of match to that standard of formulas?
So this, the, those formulas, staffing formulas, I'm told did not change from Patterson to what was adopted. So as soon as the simulation comes out, and I'm hoping to get our first draft next week, I'm going to start doing that comparison. So hopefully when I do do the next presentation to the board, I can show that comparison. So what I'm envisioning is the state budget does this on these, based on these formulas and our local taxes add on to that and support that, and then our grants add on to that.
That standard was also for review where it's certain percentages as how much you're spending on this, how much you're spending.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Treasure Wagner. After our last meeting, somebody said, wow, you guys talk about budget a lot. And I said, isn't that a great thing? You're hearing the public's business taking place in public for our schools. So thank you very much for all your work and the work of all the team. Okay. Next, we have our Chief Strategy Officer, Sarah Trimble Oliver. Uh-oh. Okay. Perfect. My apologies. Go to part two.
Thank you. So I'm here today to share an update on our community engagement around ESSER 3. So what did we ask? What are your thoughts regarding programs, resources, and systems you see as priorities for CPS over the next few years? And that can be funded with ESSER 3 funds to improve academics, social emotional supports, and operations in the district? We got pretty good responses over a two-week period. We did, after the questions last week, resend this out through text message because we know that helps get to a broader swath of the population. And we did get about 400 more parents responding in addition. So it breaks down 64% parent guardian caregiver, 30% staff, and 6% other. About 4,000 total participants. Overall priorities consistent across those groups. Strategies and activities to address learning loss, 21%. Mental health services, 16%, increased staffing. And here are just some comments. So around learning loss, a lot of comments about mislearning, closing the gap, how to help students who have fallen behind, kids who are on the bubble. These are the highest ranked comments, by the way. That's what we pulled up here. As we think about mental and emotional health services, so having social workers and psychologists available, making sure we have staff in all buildings, licensed professional counselors, and the importance of supporting students and families academically and emotionally. And then finally, highest rate of thoughts on increased staffing. And it is worth noting that this is across both parents and staff, so I just want to throw that out there. But a lot around smaller classrooms and additional support in the classroom. And then just a quick note for the public, if you would like to include any additional thoughts on ESSER funding in the chat, we'd be glad to take those comments as well. Any questions?
Mr. Mrowski. Thank you, Vice President Messer. Just to kind of follow up on board member Lindy's point, and I know if he was here, he would be asking about it. So I'm.
I'm listening, Mike.
Meetings. Is, do, I know last week it seemed like there was, there was not, correct me if I'm wrong, a way to disaggregate these responses to see where the families are from? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we can only look at it in the aggregate?
Correct.
Is there a way, sorry. Is there a way or a different service we could use where we can't see that?
So POSIP allows us to do that, which is the tool that we use during the school year. That tool was not available to us for this particular survey. So yes, POSIP allows us to do that, which is part of the reason we moved to that tool.
What was that last part?
POSIP, the survey tool, allows us to disaggregate data, but it was not available to us for this particular opportunity.
Treasure Wagner?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that I was able to preview this data before we came down here. And the good news is that we have pretty heavily invested in those areas of concern, either through our regular general operating budget or ESSER. So we'll gather that, organize that information for the next meeting.
And you know what, as I'm looking at it, you know, I think it's great that we have the various stakeholder groups. Parent caregiver bucket is wonderful. I'm equally as interested in what our staff, who are our boots on the ground, that are living and breathing this every day, is there a way to break it out to see priorities for each of those stakeholder groups?
I would need to look at this particular, I can't remember off the top of my head if we did like teachers, administrative staff, principals, a lot of times we do do that. So let me look at that and get it back to you.
Yeah. And then I think, you know, to me, I think there's also some, when we do this at my work, it also is an opportunity to tell us where we have to do a better job of educating, either on some things that we're already doing or help understanding, like, I think there's nobody sitting here that doesn't agree that it would be wonderful if we had small classes of 10 kids. I mean, we would, many of us would love that. However, with as many classrooms, you're, you're drinking every single classroom. I mean, just, you know, what would that look like from a fiscal impact? And I think it would be significant. So helping to show kind of this is the why behind some of the decisions that are made today. Just one example, not to say that we can't make some adjustments there. But you know, I think, you know, helping to bring some background on the why behind some of these things is just important on the things we do versus the things we don't.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Second, what the vice president has said, and also happy with what Treasure mentioned of addressing next time, not just the top three priorities, but all of these individual ones as to what we've done. Because I know there's been some talk, well, we're actually overstaffed in our schools or something. The reality is that folks want us to be heavily staffed in the schools where the kids are. But I think it would be great to see that. And I, and I think we've endured a lot of criticism where people will actually take away the idea that we don't have enough sites and we don't have enough people as interventionists or we don't have enough community health support or something. So I think as we measure this again, we still need that inventory of our partners' offers. Because that has to be part of the, part of the figuring as well. So be very specific about it and let the public know we've been, when I think back or the states thinks back, what we used to have, you know, years ago, even five years ago. The movement has been great. We're not done. But I, I really do think that's Mr. Messer's point. We have to do a better job of telling people what we've got. School by school. Aggregate stuff does not make a deal. It doesn't, it doesn't help sell a case. Literally has to be school by school. And that way is the way we can figure out where we're not doing as well as we should. So this is great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ryan, can you hear me okay?
All right. Mr. Lindy, sorry.
That's okay. Can you, I'm remote with my family's vacation. Can you all hear me okay?
We're going to see if they can turn you up just a little bit.
How about now? Any better? I can hear you all great, but can you hear me?
Yeah.
The public might be able to hear you, but I'm not hearing you very well here in the room. Give them all the way up.
Should I just try to talk very loudly?
That's much better.
Okay, well, we'll try that. I, I just wanted to share, I think, my concern that we can't, I, I don't know how we can rely on the information with much confidence, given we're not totally sure who we're hearing from. And I think, you know, Mike brought this up, and I know I brought this up earlier, but it, it's really hard to tell whether the groups of respondents, you know, all come from the same part of the CPS community or, or whether we're, we're really do have a representative cross-section of the district. It, it may be that there's nothing we can do at this point for the stakeholder engagement on this, this budget. I think I just wanted to register my discouragement at that fact. And I wanted to see if my, if my fellow board members in looking to the future, I feel like we have to put a stake in the ground and say, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to have surveys or stakeholder engagement where we, we can't measure things like what share of our responses come from families of color? What share of our responses come from Title I schools versus non-Title I schools? I just think we have to say that if nothing else going forward, we're going to do this differently. And I would love to hear what other folks think.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, just for clarity, Pam, are you saying that we need to choose measures that can capture that information versus just adopting any type of measure? Is that what I hear you saying? That we need to evaluate that possibility before we adapt the way of obtaining that information?
I think so, Pam. I think what I'm saying is if it's the case that Thought Exchange won't tell us whether we have a representative set of responses, we shouldn't use Thought Exchange anymore. Like, we've got to use tools that let us know whether or not we're, we're hearing from a broad and diverse cross-section of our constituents.
I agree.
I just spoke to Treasure Wagner, just as far as the timeline. And we do have more time to do some engagement and collect demographic information. So I'm going to recommend that administration go back, do a survey. And let's take advantage that we're going to have in-person learning next week. And we can even use some of the tools that our families like, the hard truth of coffee, and maybe going out and giving it to all families through tagging it on, on students. So we will go back and engage families and provide the demographic data to go along with it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Now we're ready for our Chief Strategy Officer, Sarah Trimble Oliver. Would you please present your presentation for tonight?
Good evening. So we do have a short update tonight in follow-up to a challenging situation with Metro Transportation Services, which was presented last week. First, Metro did hold a virtual public meeting on their service changes last Thursday, August 5. Metro's team presented details of the changes, which was then followed by questions and comments submitted by the public. Also, board member Bolton sent a communication to the sort of board chair to request a meeting between the leaderships of the boards and the administrations of both organizations in order to work collaboratively towards mutual goals for the children of Cincinnati. And this meeting has been set for tomorrow afternoon at CPS office. And today Superintendent Amat sent a communication to the city manager and the chief of police to express our concerns about the decision to eliminate extra service routes and the impact that this will have on our students and families and neighborhoods. And this letter is requesting their advocacy to restore the extra service route. And so that is the brief update since our last meeting on the Metro situation.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah Trimble Oliver. Let me see if we have any questions. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you for that summary of the Metro situation. Are we not going to, are we, when will we hear prior to school how would, what the situation, what the status is regarding our elementary kids and yellow bus? When, when might we know that?
Sure, we can prepare an update on the yellow bus update. At whichever date the board desires.
That would, that would be great because I know there's confusion out there that, you know, we want to make sure that our yellow bus and our elementary kids know that that is well in hand or we're trying to get it well in hand. So that might be something that we would want to do. I kind of anticipated it would be about all transportation tonight, but knowing the issue of our crisis and our emergency, I appreciate the, the update on Metro. But I think we, I know none of us want to start the first week and have the second week as we have often had about transportation, especially the yellow bus. Because that used to be part of the perpetual issue. So that would be great, even if it's a memo form or whatever. Thank you.
Superintendent Amat?
Can you just give an update on yellow bus services and where we stand today?
Yes. So our yellow bus routes have been completed. Our bus cards have been sent to the post office for families and those should be hitting homes within the next few days. We also are really marketing and pushing the use of a couple of technology apps, Power School and My Stop, because that information, for example, the pickup and drop-off information is available in Power School in addition to the bus cards that we mail home. We also have a fully staffed customer call center to be able to handle phone calls or emails that come in, inquiries or service requests. I think those are the main points, but I'd be happy to also provide more details in a minute.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Messer. Thank you, Ms. Trimble Oliver. Does that call center until the bus company people and our team or just our team?
Both.
So they can talk, their parents can talk directly to someone from the company?
Yes, that's right.
Perfect.
Any other questions? I have to say it's a great skill and an indication of preparedness for somebody to be able to go right to a secondary presentation without preparation for that specifically. So thank you for that update. You give us great confidence that we're ready to go there for the start of the school year, especially if we are able to get the sort of boards and Metro's help with that tomorrow. All right. Okay. We are now at the item on the agenda for hearing of the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include an opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue. We'll exercise the right to do so. We respectfully ask employees of the district to direct all questions, concerns, and comments regarding district, return in-person learning, your building representative, your building leadership, or the district hotline. Once a request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Please provide your name, your affiliation to district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you'd like to have any questions answered. This request is consistent with the board protocol. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. You may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personal items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. And lastly, we ask that your public commentary be respectful to everyone listening in, including some of our students. Thank you. Mr. Hoynes?
Of, we have five speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Owen Durico, followed by Yusuf Manir, followed by Ruth DeBonow. Go ahead, Mr. Durico.
Hello, board. Can, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm sure that, you know, we're all familiar with each other. My name is Owen Durico. I am the vice president of the Young Activist Coalition. As has been the case for over the past year and a half, I'm once again calling in to express our sustained support for measures to remove the Cincinnati Police Department from Cincinnati Public Schools. There has been, again, over the past year and a half that our campaign has been underway, no significant or really any at all evidence to the contrary of the claims and statistics which we have brought to your attention. Despite several attempts from this board and certain members on it to discredit those statistics, none of those efforts have actually come to fruition. The actual underlying data that motivates our campaign and our convictions has remained completely uncountered by anything to the contrary or any actual evidence that the statistics that we have presented are in any way less than representative of what's occurring in the district. For there to be any actual suggestion that there are other measures or methods that can be used to curb these problems as well as just the broader criminalization of students, something would have had to be presented in that area. As of yet, there has been no counterproposal to what we have presented. And fundamentally, that is because there is nothing that can address.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yusuf Er, followed by Ruth DeBonow, followed by Bella Gordo. Go ahead, Mr. Manir.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can.
Hello, my name is Yusuf. You all know me. I am a CPS alum and a former member of the Young Activist Coalition. I'm calling in today, like Owen said, for the same reason that we've been calling in for a year and a half. Because each and every one of you has a responsibility to actively and, and. because each and every one of you has a responsibility to actively and wholeheartedly fight the criminalization of the Black and Brown children for whom you all claim to care so much about. And the only way to do that is by removing cops and punitive discipline from schools entirely and replacing it with restorative and transformative justice, as well as hiring an increase in mental health professionals such as psychologists and others, support staff like counselors, social workers, and nurses. But today what I want to focus on is this idea that Board Member Lindy brought up about a representative survey. Specifically, I want to focus on the, the, the survey that the Health and Safety Committee did about removing police from schools in the SRO program, which provided no data about SROs, which only talked to about 20 people in total, and which made them talk with police officers, with SROs, with no true understanding of the actual data behind what SROs do in schools, including the fact that they enter over 400 children, the children that you all are responsible for, into the criminal, criminal legal system every single school year. The school year that is just about to start will result in 400 more children being entered into the criminal legal system because you all, for the past year and a half, when you've had ample opportunity, when kids are not in school, to take a stand, have failed to do anything. You all failed to, to take a stand because you all are too afraid to stand up for what is right. You're too afraid to stand up with organizations like the Anti-Police Brutality Coalition, the Activist Coalition.
Our next speaker is Ruth DeBonow, followed by Bella Gordo, followed by Eliza O'Keefe. Go ahead, Ms. DeBonow.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So as you all know, as everyone knows, we're going, going to be going back to school next week. Actually, since I'm going to be entering my senior year, but because of the ways, because of the SROs in our schools, I cannot feel safe going into schools. The presence of police officers and punitive discipline in my schools do not allow me, as a Black student, and many other students to feel safe in our schools. For me, police officers represent fear, power, and white supremacy. We have come to speak at these board meetings for over a year, telling you why and telling you all the data, the statistics, that 400 students, as Yusuf said, have been entered into the criminal justice system every single year because of CPS and because of the SROs in CPS. We have data and research showing that restorative and transformative justice works and is necessary for students. The board continues to ignore community support and endorsements from organizations, including the ACLU, the Anti-Police Brutality Coalition, the Homeless Coalition, and many other communities. Board has a mission to, to protect students in our schools. By continuing to support the presence of police officers in our schools, you are harming Black and Brown students every single day, as well as all students who are victims of punitive discipline and arrest because of SROs.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Bella Gordo, followed by Eliza O'Keefe, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Gordo.
Hi, I'm a student organizer with the Young Actress Coalition, and I'm, I'm Bella, and I'm a president of Young Actress Coalition. Tonight, I'm speaking for the same reason myself and my fellow organizers have been for the past year, to demand that the board end the relationship between the district and Cincinnati Police Department. Today, one of the board members said to us while we were outside the building without provocation that she is not a white supremacist. That may or may not be true, but I would like to let it be known that continuing to allow Black students to be disproportionately arrested, expelled, and suspended is, in fact, an act of white supremacy, and I do not say this lightly. But there's a simple solution to this disproportionality, and that solution is to get rid of police officers in schools and implement restorative justice practices. When you oppose the solution, you oppose the ACLU of Ohio, the Cincinnati Police Brutality Coalition, the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition, the Cincinnati Tennis Union, the Inter-Community Justice and Peace Center, and the over 500 community members who have signed up to to move and implement restorative justice. When you oppose the solution, you oppose your students, parents, and teachers, and whoever else in your community who have gave you the seat on your board, have gave you this, your seat on this board. This coming school year, we expect that the board will take action, prevent all students, especially Black students, from SROs and from the white supremacy that you allowed to continue in our schools. Students should not have to fear being arrested or being punished and being criminalized in their own schools, in their own learning environment. That's insane. That's absolutely mind-blowing that you would allow Black students to be disproportionately criminalized like that. Did you know that Black student, that, did you know that if you suspend a kid just once, you're tripling the likelihood that they will end up in jail? Do you know that 75% of all incarcerated people in America are high school dropouts? When you disproportionately punish students like this, you're, you're guaranteeing, basically, that they will end up in jail.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eliza O'Keefe, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. O'Keefe.
Okay, hello, school board. My name is Eliza O'Keefe, and I'm a student at Walnut Hills High School. I was not present at the school board building today, but the Young Activist Coalition, the organization I work with, was and had the opportunity speak with a few school board members. Now, we are assured that they are not white supremacists, and I certainly hope not, but the fact is that to punish Black students as disproportionately as they are punished within CPS is an exercise in white supremacy. Regardless, to force over 400 children into contact with the criminal justice system every year is both unnecessary and cruel. To that end, as usual, I'm here to demand that school resource officers are removed from Cincinnati Public Schools, and crucially, that other forms of punitive discipline are replaced with restorative and transformative justice. The data is on our side. We have the support of the ACLU of Ohio, the Homeless Coalition, the Anti-Police Brutality Coalition, and over 500 community members. It is my hope and dream and wish and demand that we get the support of the CPS school board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Hello, good evening this eve, tonight. First, I would just like to say that we are still very worried and concerned about the transit issue with Metro canceling the routes for our students. I do want to say that I, I'm in full support of however you are going to fight this, and I will be there with you however you go about it. Please let me know how I can help. Because as you know, CFT and many of the CPS families supported the recent Metro attacks that promised improved public transportation. But it turns out Metro service that they rely on most has been gutted. The CPS and Metro boards must get back to work to fix this before school starts because it's going to have a very negative impact on attendance for our students and the safety of the students getting to and from school. This is going to impact students as young as the age of 11 years old, and we must not allow that to happen, especially with the number of students that we've had who have been hit by cars going to and from school when their bus routes were on the same side of the street. And this is going to have, there's going to have accidents. But I want to tell everybody who is watching that they should call Metro's office, their Customer Care Center at 632-7575, and tell them that you feel that the safety of CPS 7312 students should be their priority, and that they should get enough buses and drivers so that those routes can continue because the way they have scheduled it is too dangerous. Thank you and have a good evening.
Ms. Sellers? Could you repeat that number once again?
It's, it's three, or 632-7575. Every parent should call. Every student should call.
It also fit out that in the chat.
Put it in the chat.
I at least got several emails today. They, they were thinking that this board made the decision. So I think it's really important the public, and the board, and how they can get that, their, their feedback. Thank you.
Addressing the fact that this was due to Metro.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment for tonight. Moving on, does anyone have any kudos to share? All right, seeing none. Ms. Bolton has a kudo.
I want to congratulate and thank and send kudos out to those elected officials that are helping us send the message to the community regarding the sort of situation. We have great confidence the SORDA board is listening. And, and I want to particularly thank the super, super Whitro Tiger Commissioner Alicia Reese for being the first of the other elected officials outside the board, the school board for speaking loudly and clearly about the need to serve our students as a top priority by SORDA. So I want to shout out to that great alum of Whitro and congratulate Commissioner Reese being so public in her support.
Well stated. Thank you. All right, Ms. Bates, please present the retirements for tonight.
Yes, thank you. Now, we have two retirements. Sharon A. Ginter and Mary Jo Montenegro Miller from our civil service personnel. We have several retirements as well. Diane Dahl, Denise Fuller, Roberta Howard, Jill McAtee, and Polly Nordman. So we thank these professionals for their service to our children and wish them well in their retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you to each of them. All right, moving on to board matters. Ms. Bolton, could you please present your topic?
Yes, and it's been touched on very well already tonight, and I appreciate that. It's the issue of public engagement and the requirement of the federal dollars to have public engagement about how we are spending these public dollars. And some of us have figured out too that there are a lot of demands regarding public engagement for the expenditure of federal dollars. And I just wanted to see if, two things, if we could kind of have a list of those topics, and you sort of hit on them earlier, but those topics that the ESER money requires very specifically in our district to have discussion on. I'm assuming the treasurer would have knowledge of some of the specificity of the topics, whether it's buildings or whatever, rather than these broad peak rush approaches. And then I, just as a secondary thing, knowing that we face in this fall, a superintendent search, which I know we're going to be very much involved with the community engagement, wanting to get the maximum, as well as knowing where and who is participating. I think it makes sense to kind of have an overall engagement plan that would encompass both of those streams of public engagement, to get the maximum number and be as efficient as possible, because when you do the superintendent search, it's just like LSD MCs at schools. Everybody's participating in the principal search when everybody feels so strongly about who's the superintendent. So I just wanted to know if there's some sort of overall plan or we could have one. And then also, what are the specific topics out of ESER that would require engagement?
Are you asking me to respond now or do a presentation?
Whenever you're comfortable. I think if you, if you can respond a little bit and then be more specific in a memo later, I think that would be helpful.
So the rule around the public engagement, this meaningful consultation with the public, with your stakeholders, they actually list out the stakeholders on the different categories, but they're not requirements to spend, they're just allowable spend, allowable categories that you can spend money on. It's not, they're not requiring us to spend our money on learning loss. They're saying, if you want to spend your money on learning loss, we'll allow you to do that. So that's the only guidance they gave us, was have meaningful, meaningful consultation. It's very vague, and then recommend or say use this tool or that fashion or whatever. And I'm not even sure what evidence they're looking for from us. Trying to do as much documentation as I can.
So, thank you. So, for example, the, the build-out of some of our schools that we've already determined to do may need some guidance as to how to do it, and part of it was, you know, it wasn't necessarily about learning loss, but it was about overcrowdedness or meeting distance in spaces. Is that the same? Are we required to have engagement about that as well as learning loss?
My understanding is not to that level of specificity. I think what we did over the last few weeks satisfies the OD's requirement for meaningful consultation. I don't think they're looking for line item conversation.
Well, that's, that's very good about then the public engagement because we, you know, we have to move quickly on some of these things. And you, do you think we've, that we've met the criteria or is more stuff to be done?
I think we met the criteria, but it does say that, you know, they understand that, like, on ESER cares, the CARES Act and ESER 2, we had constant revisions to the budget because new information came available, new place, whatever. So what they're saying is that make sure that as you're constantly revising that the public is aware. And so they made us post it on the website, and so we'll continue to keep that updated. We can continue some kind of a thought exchange or some kind of feedback loop through that website. And then we can add it to our monthly report-outs through Finance Committee. I honestly haven't thought that far in advance. I was just trying to get to the balanced budget. We'll certainly work on that. But yeah, my understanding is that we do not have to go and put line item by line item in terms of.
Great, that, that makes me feel a little better about the timing of what we need to take action on. And it answers Mr. Messer's comment from the public, we need a lot about budget. Well, part of that was to meet that criteria, so I think we have kept the public fairly well informed. Thank you. And, and then really, we can concentrate on the superintendent engagement and some of this other stuff that we're interested in. And, and use that engagement to do what you all just talked about, which is share with the superintendent, which is share with the public all the things that we are doing, that they are interested in us doing, and to, to meet their demands and requests. So that's great. Thank you.
Just a side note, we will be providing an update on the superintendent search at our next meeting on the so stay tuned for that. Things are moving right along. Okay, any other questions? Let's transition to interim Superintendent Amat. Do you have a report?
I sure do. As we are pulling it up, I would like to start the report on welcoming our new CPS principals. We have Mike Allison, who was previously the principal at South Avondale. He will be leading at Euler. Danielle Vaddell, who was with Whitro as an assistant principal, is at the Promise Center. Maureen Brenner, Mount Washington School. And the former principal is now a director of school leaders, so supporting principals. Kendafu is the interim principal for Westwood School, and the former principal there is also a director of school leader. So we are building our pipeline of leaders and looking at great examples and how to spread that those skills. We have Yolanda Jackson at Data Montessori, Ashley Jones at Chase School, Tiffany Mayer at Reese Price, April Simmons at South Avondale, Brittany Tudor, Evanston Academy, and Jennifer Williams at Hughes STEM High School. So we welcome our principals and support them for the upcoming school year. So we welcome our principals and support them for the upcoming school year. The next three slides is based on a survey regarding how people want to hear from us. And we're going to kick it off with a quarterly newsletter. It is new, it will be mailed home, and you should be receiving that newsletter next week. And it's not only for our families, but also our staff, so having aligned communication. I'm excited to announce CPS Super 60. So you will get your updated information in 60 seconds or less, and that will be coming out August 18 via videos and social media. And lastly, Tea with Tiana, it is an opportunity to engage the community. I have done Tea with Tiana with our principals last year, and we are going to take the show on the road and have the engagement with communities, LSD and Cs, IOTs, and in schools and at local coffee shops. So more information to come. That concludes my report, and I will submit the written report for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Bowers?
I just have a comment that I picked up that CPS Super 60. I watched CBS this morning, and they do their 60 second also, so I can hear good.
Any other comments or questions? I would just like to say as a parent, that's going to be very helpful, just to keep on track of everything. You know, there's the school board stuff, and then there's getting your kid ready and knowing what you need to do and things that are necessary for parents to know. And I think there are several forums in different formats, and I think that's how we can best serve our families. Thank you for that. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised superintendent recommendations?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I think it might be a mistake, but we're, I think we have Rupinia Jackson listed twice, or is it two different? It's on, what was page 13? Peer review panel facilitator, is it two different levels of it? Maybe that's, maybe it got revised, but in the original one I had on page 13, about 7,500.
Ms. Murphy says one is for last year and one is for this time.
Perfect, thank you, appreciate it. And that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers, I recuse myself from recommendation one, letter F, but yes on everything else.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Ms. Rosky?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Bolton, please present your inquiry and update topic.
Okay. I was ready for the treasurer's report.
And that was the new law for assigning the information.
It's the IRN. Yeah, it's our.
Skipped a whole, a whole letter there.
I'll do the treasurer's.
Yeah, we'll do the treasurer's report first, my apologies. All right. Motion to approve the report of the treasurer. The second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, oh, sorry, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just for public's sake, I think it would be important that we mention the cost of the crossing guards at our elementary schools, that we pay the city for their services. It's in the, I think it's, uh, it's listed as $778,029.85, which gives us crossing guards at all of our elementary schools, as it's listed here. And to note that at high schools, the state and the city does not require crossing guards. And at our high schools, it does not require all of the paraphernalia and mechanics and safety features that we have at our elementary schools, and even doesn't require necessarily crossing areas, let alone different lights and flashing lights. The state doesn't require it, so the city doesn't do it. We've asked the city to do it now for nine years, and they've not been able to make that a priority. And I think it just compounds some of the issues regarding the bus routes for all of us. And that we have confidence that we can have good things come from the sort of board. But again, there's almost 800,000 on crossing guards that we give the city, rightfully so, willing and happy to do it, but there's almost nothing regarding our 15 high schools. So many council people don't even know that we're paying for their city employees. Happy to do it, but again, it's a double standard about our high school safety and elementary.
And, you know, kind of on that topic of the safety, you know, one thing I noticed just in the past couple of weeks was that my children's school, which was a, really a drag race, I've taken my life into my hands a few times trying to cross there, but I've not done the back drop off. And there has been a road narrowing, where they curve, made a curve out in that first lane. So now they have to kind of go through a narrower where, ah. Whoever did that, thank you. I'm sure that's part of a broader plan, but it'd be nice maybe to have a, an update on that because that will likely save somebody's life because it is a eerie spot to be. And again, we have all the research, crossing guards and everything at that school. It's our high schools, it's free for all. But at least there, there's been some significant work, so thank you to whoever led that. Yes?
Our strategic officer has been very involved too with the safe routes to school and the plan, the overall master plan for that. So there's lots of work that's been done, whether it's Vision Zero or what have you. When we could all meet one day and put all the different reports together and make some priorities, mightn't that be a bad idea to have some collaboration on what was a tremendous priority two years ago with our pedestrian safety? And it is one in the city as well. So maybe there's something we can all come together and concentrate on finally and put the reports together and not just have them be on paper.
And, you know, I think there was initially some talk of doing that topic as a partnership with the Education Committee of City Council. I think that'd be a great collaboration there, bringing all these pieces together. So thank you for that reminder. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Do we do the roll?
We haven't yet.
Pardon me?
We have not yet.
Okay, good, that's what I thought. All right, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll on the treasurer's report.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Bowers? Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Now we're ready for the inquiry and update topic.
Yes.
Little profile of the person.
Sorry about that. I was asked to answer some questions about CDA requiring a new IRN. Just to give you some background, you should have all received a little one-page summary. New Ohio Revised Code 3302 was passed, and because of that, we had to separate CDA from virtual because the law required that remote school children could not go, could not be in an accountability system with children who actually go to a school. And so that's the reason why we had to apply for a new IRN. So the only, the only difference, I mean, of course, CDA gets a new IRN. It's considered its own school, which means kids who, when they graduate, they will, it will say Cincinnati Digital Academy on their diploma versus virtual, which it used to say. We meet the requirements of that Ohio Revised Code. We were very innovative to begin with, very unique situation we have with virtual with a remote program built in. A lot of school districts are now catching up, and OD realized this was a need out there, and that's why this law was passed. The main difference is that the kids from CDA, they are taught remotely, and, but they do have a teacher that engages with them on a daily basis through Google Meet. Whereas those kids who come in to virtual actually come into the brick and mortar, they too do their work digitally, but they have teachers in the building who can support them with their needs. Yes.
Thank you for that update. Ms. Bolton? Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, Ms. Alana, for this report. And I'm thinking, I'm correlating this concept, same as Dater and West High, having two IRN numbers, or is it one IRN number for that campus?
I'm sorry.
Dater and West High, do they have one IRN number?
Yeah, Dater High School has its own IRN, and Western Hills has its own IRN.
Okay, and so the, with cost-wise, and maybe Treasurer Wagner could probably help me with this question. Does this increase the cost of running the schools up under separate IRNs because it's not interchangeable staff, or does that a factor?
Unless they decided to do separate principals and a whole separate office to go. And this was a requirement in House for one to have in the budget bill.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes. I think we were very innovative about virtual high school. And then my recollection for virtual high school too is that many of the kids that were at virtual high school started at a different high school in Cincinnati Public and then transferred to virtual for various unsound reasons, so the learning style or issues or questions. Are we still thinking in terms of virtual high schools having absorbed our kids from some of the other high schools that want to leave that high school but stay within the district or be virtual, you know, have a virtual piece, maybe superintendent?
Yes, that option is still available to all of our families if they want to transfer into the virtual high school. I think the biggest difference with virtual, you can actually come onsite and do the digital curriculum with teacher support in person. Where CDA, you are working remotely on a digital curriculum, and even your engagement with the teacher is virtual. So that's the biggest difference between the two, and the state wanted to make that clear. But our students have access to both programs.
I think that sounds good, and that's, that's good clarity for me. Then the other piece is obviously the virtual high school starts at nine, at grade nine. Is there any thought to make it more like the other high schools that they start at grade seven? I mean, I'm not sure why it starts at nine after we made the big move from K8 to 712.
We'll take a look at that. You didn't consider that?
Those are often difficult years, especially bullying and what have you. And that, I know some of the value of what we've done last year in digital, a lot of that pressure and tension is reduced for many of our students if it's virtual. So if you look at that, that would be great, appreciate it. But we also do at Digital Academy have actual teachers helping kids, but they're doing it virtually, not in, okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Bowers?
It's just for clarity, interim superintendent, virtual has a high number of credit recovery students. And I'm thinking the 912 component, I mean, it probably is the credit hours in eighth grade of course for algebra and other courses, but the main one is a lot. Our population is for credit recovery. Would you, would you say that that's true? I know we're doing more at that at each individual campus also.
I didn't hear you. Is the population?
It's right, do we have a high percentage of students in credit recovery at virtual? Meaning why that might be a 912 number versus 712?
Possibly historically, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming in this evening.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right. A rounding on third here. Heading home, are there any assignments tonight? Ms. Bates?
Yes, I have an assignment through the administration that I request that for the board, we receive a list of schools with waitlists and the number by grade on the waitlist for the start of this year.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Morosky?
I had an inquiry and update, if that's okay. We can just jump back real quick. So my update, I thought this was pretty cool. I met with the former valedictorian of Walnut Hills High School, Maz Usmani. He started a company in college that would literally give teachers almost automatic feedback on sort of the temperature of their classroom and how things are going. He's been working with, I know he's already gotten with Dr. Bunger, and he's meeting with people at CPS already. I just wanted to update the board, I said I thought it was really cool. That this kid was a sophomore in college who had his own tech startup, and I thought about me as a sophomore in college, and there's this very opposite sort of roles. But I was really impressed with him. It's called Prism, and I think it could be pretty cool, so I just wanted to highlight that for everyone. And then lastly, also student related in some respects. So months ago, and so inquiry, we don't need to talk about it now unless people want to, but months ago, and something was triggered in the public commentary that reminded me of this. I had asked for compelling data that countered the ACLU's data on cops in our schools. And I've never seen anything. If we have that, I would love to see it. And I know in Ms. Bates's committee, there was talk of meeting police chief and all these things, and everything stopped. So I'm just curious if those conversations have happened, if we are going to meet with them or if you all have met with them and what the police, we're going to have like a sit down. I'm just curious if there was an update.
Ms. Bowers and I met with the SROs.
Just the SROs?
Right.
I think it'd be important that there, I thought we were talking about like a broader community thing because if we're just meeting with, say, young activists or meeting with just SROs, we're going to get one thing. Like, I thought we were going to have a broader community conversation, and I feel like that just stopped.
I, I think that the idea and the recommendation came to health and safety, and I think we were working on trying to get that together, to have everybody representative in the room and have a conversation about this and the interim superintendent can follow up.
That is accurate. Assistant Superintendent Murphy is working on a task force to bring all stakeholders to the table to have discussion.
And I believe this is supposed to happen during health and safety? If, that's what the recommendation was given, during health and safety?
Great, thank you.
Okay, and, and I don't know if it's an actual formal assignment, but I would still like to see some data on the effectiveness of the program. Some, I haven't seen.
Really noted, all right. Okay, any other assignments? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. And I think that my, my policy chair is addressing this in policy this month. But now knowing what we know, we've passed our resolution regarding masking and enforcing our policy about masking. I think we've reached the point where it's time now to revisit vaccinations and what that may mean. And I know we meet in the last, what is it, the last Thursday or something of the month, which would be this August. I think it would be, move us to reconsider that and try to, maybe as early as September or even before the policy meeting, have at least another short or whatever discussion in the board before policy to revisit. Feeling that the FDA is going to be approving it perhaps in the mid-September. Now that we've also had some national union leaders that have now come forward with mandating vaccinations, or at least that's my understanding. And also how some folks have addressed it, meaning vaccinations. And if you don't have the vaccination, or everybody faces weekly testing. So there's a lot of issues to get resolved, and I think the earlier we can get that resolved, the better for everyone, one way or the other. I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I think it's, it's like the police issue too. It's time to make some decisions and with the best information we have. So I would assign it to policy, but I'm sure it's already there. But you might want to be thinking if there's, if there's a reason or a will on the board to at least have an open discussion again before policy. open discussion again before policy, so we kind of know where we're going.
It'll be on the agenda. It'll be like a seven-hour meeting, big agenda.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, folks, it's been great being with all of you tonight. Thank you for joining us, and in the words of one of our former mayors in Cincinnati, take care of yourself and each other. Have a good night.